Right now, but if there's some more space here, if you want to stand along here, or maybe up here. We'll try to keep it in a safe mode and not have to spill out into the hallway. So, a few people want to stand along here. Let me close this other door here. Okay? And a few people can stand here and along this wall.
Are there any more forms for speakers to speak?
Uh, there was forms back there to speak. We'll try to keep this as safe as possible, but a few of y'all want to come up here and stand by the wall. You're welcome to do that.
Yeah.
Sure.
Any more places to stand up here if anybody wishes to stand along the wall here?
Under these circumstances, we will get through quickly, but it may be a lengthy meeting. I'm not sure. We'll see how it goes. I beg for the roll call again this morning. I recognize all of the commissioners that are here. I'm the county judge. I don't need to call the roll. This may be illegal. You can sue us if you want to for not calling the roll. I assure you, you'll be in for a long fight if you do. Bring plenty of money to the fight.
If you bow your head for prayer, our heavenly Father, we're thankful for many blessings that you have bestowed on us during our lifetime. We ask that you continue to look upon us with favor and that we will do the things that you expect of us and hold ourselves out to all of the people that we come in contact with in a good manner. Please be with us at each step of the way through this life. In heavenly name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please proceed.
We have that too.
It's hard as hell, I have, unless someone else is holding one.
We'll start off with the citizens to be heard.
Will you remind them we all have three minutes?
Yes. Everybody has three minutes to speak, and then you're through. And it's not for you to make the rest of your speech from there. It's to quit and sit down. And I don't mind having the sheriff or anybody else remove you from the room. If you don't follow the rules, that's one of them. So, with that said...
Okay. Tricia Tragilio?
Please speak into the mic so everybody can hear.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Tricia Tragilio. I'm a fellow at the Civil Rights Clinic at the UTI Austin Law School. I'm here to speak on behalf of myself and the director of the clinic, Rundan Anatarajan. Excuse me, I just ran over. So, I'm here today to comment on the litigation cost of expanding the beds at Karnes County Family Detention Center. As the Commissioners' Court has previously heard from civil rights advocates, the conditions of the Karnes Family Detention Center violate the constitutional rights of the women and children detained. For example, young children are losing weight because they've been denied adequate nutrition, and both women and children have been denied access to adequate medical treatment. Advocates from around the country are monitoring these issues, and if conditions do not improve, lawsuits will be the next logical step. If GIO or the county attorney has stated that the county is insulated from liability and the cost of litigation, they're mistaken. First, the law's developing in this area. There are conflicting decisions from federal courts about whether a county can be held liable for contracting with a prison company like GIO with a record as bad as GIO's. The Supreme Court has previously held that private contracts for medical care for prisoners do not relieve governments of their constitutional duties, nor do they deprive prisoners of their right to vindicate their constitutional rights in federal courts. This precedent suggests that if count... Excuse me. This precedent suggests that if Karnes County knows that GIO is likely to violate its detained constitutional rights, Karnes County will be held responsible when those rights violations ultimately occur. Federal courts in New Mexico, Massachusetts, and Nebraska have held that counties can be held liable for constitutional violations at the hands of private prison contractors. Second, regardless of whether Karnes County wins or loses in federal court, the county will be on the hook for the cost of defending against these lawsuits. Advocates could file class action lawsuits, which are extremely costly to defend. In court, civil rights lawyers will argue that since the county is aware of GIO's deplorable record of constitutional violations, the county itself is liable for knowingly subjecting women and children to violations of a constitutional magnitude. Lawyers will also argue in federal court that GIO is an agent of Karnes County, and therefore Karnes County will be liable for everything that GIO does. Karnes County is placing itself at the forefront of a battle over enforcement of constitutional rights in private prisons. This is not a wise financial decision for the county to make.
Good morning. I'm not against the detainees. I feel sorry for the predicament they are in. However, I have two questions. If the Commissioners' Court is so afraid of being sued by GIO, if you vote not to let them expand, then why does GIO even have to ask permission to expand? Number two, does contract have a clause that states no release of detainees to our community and no access to our public schools? This needs to be stated in the contract, or they're going to be on our doorstep expecting us to support them. It's been made to sound like sunshine and roses. It will bring jobs to the county. Well, good luck with that. TDCJ and many businesses in Karnes County can't find enough workers to fill their vacancies. I'm not going to bore you by repeating data I have already given you about the unit in Dilly, but want to clarify something about the Dilly unit. It was built as a man camp for oilfield workers, not as a male detainee only camp. When expanded, it will hold women and children only. I just want to remind the court and other elected officials, the people of Karnes County voted you into office. You work for us and are responsible for what happens in this county. At the special meeting on December 1st, 2014, there was a question about who would be responsible for investigations. Judge Long asked that the DA be at the workshop. The DA was there. He did not speak and was asked no questions. Why? Also, there were questions about who would pay for which services. Which services? It sounded like some expenses would come out of the $100,000 that he was giving the county.
Whoever got the phone, get out. You could come back in when you leave your phone or turn it off somewhere else. Excuse me, go ahead.
That's okay. I just have one more sentence. If expenses have to come out of the $100,000, then it's not a give me, is it? Thank you.
Hello, good morning. My name is Jonathan Ryan. I'm a resident of San Antonio, Texas. I'm an integration attorney and the director of a nonprofit that provides free representation to the families at Karnes Detention Center. I previously spoken on this topic to the commission. I wanted to redirect and circle back to some comments made by some of the commissioners after visits to the facility. I would just caution you to think that to take a tour of a facility and to speak with individuals in less than fluent Spanish is a true means to know what they are experiencing. I think it's important to speak in addition to detainees, to former detainees, to get a true perspective on the experience. I just think that's just an investigative diligence issue, and to speak with them fully fluent in their native language, I think is appropriate. As I stated before, this is not about GIO. I've had 10 years' experience working with the facilities at GIO, and I've never had anything but positive experience personally within the GIO staff. Many of them are here present. And I've seen, as my own clients have got out of the Karnes facility, I've seen the staff, as they exited the facility, looked just as happy as I was that they were getting out of the facility. So, I've got nothing against anybody at GIO. This is about a business model, and it's about a policy that has come down from the White House and has changed fundamentally the structure of the contract and the facility that you entered into. It was not a detention center for children and their mothers who approached the border looking for asylum while you guys signed up. It was a detention center for adults who had crossed illegally in the United States. I would just ask you to take one moment and think, what other groups, who else on this earth has a business model that is based upon keeping children and women against their will in a box until they pay enough money to get out? Who else? I'm not going to state the names, but I know that we're all thinking about the same groups. Is that the business model that you want to be associated with? Is that the practice that you want to be associated with? Is that a part of history that you want to be associated with? Because the decision you're making today is not about GIO. The decision and the vote that you make today is about each one of you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Maury Sardar. I'm in Karnes County, and I would like to speak against the expansion of the GIO facility. This is nothing but a money train for GIO. But I would like to mention that the Commissioners should have taken a tour of that being. GIO did an excellent job of misdirection. I mean, this is a magic job. And you went to have a pleasant time, you talked to people, everybody did a fine job. But that's not the issue, how well or badly treated they are. The issue is, do we want to allow GIO to expand? Now, according to this agenda, 600 beds. Last week it was another number. The week before that, it was a much larger number. The meeting was... The Commissioners have to understand that, as Ms. Hyber said, they do not work in a vacuum. They're not here to vote their conscience. They're here to vote the conscience of their constituents, and whether their constituents want this facility expanded. I don't believe that they've done that. We have to take major consideration, economic impact, negative impact on this county, whether school systems, our jails, legal resources, and the list goes on forever. I can assure you, GIO is not going to pony up any money when it comes down from the White House to start releasing them on the street. And you, as the Commissioners' Court, if you allow this, have no ability to stop that. And if they follow the basic models in California and Arizona, that's going to happen. But you're not here to vote your conscience, and you need to keep your eye on the ball and not get distracted by how well they're treated or whether they have enough right side tampons, or they have enough smack in their refrigerator. I hate to think of these people, but that isn't, that's not the primary consideration. They're not here yet. They're not here to talk about how good an employer they are, or how much they have provided to taxpayers. That's not the issue. And the Commissioners' Court needs to keep their eye on the ball and not get distracted by a tour. Because if that changes your mind, then you're easy. And Karnes County has a reputation for being really easy.
Esther Portillo?
Is Mrs. Portillo here?
He's checking outside.
Is it a mystery? What are we, we're being so...
There's no one out in the hallway by that name.
There's no one in the hallway by that name?
I called the name out three times.
Is there anybody in this room by that name? Then that person will not speak. Is Alfonso Gonzalez in the room? Chair, if you want to check it off.
She's checking in the other courtroom. Should be a distance.
No answer, so Alfonso Gonzalez will not speak.
Good morning. My name is Rebecca Lopez. I'm from San Antonio, Texas. This is my third time here to speak on behalf of not expanding the center. I've read a couple of things about how there's people coming from the outside to be agitators. As much as I'm here in bond of Karnes County, I can tell you that I have other things I'd like to do with my time than to just come here to agitate anyone or myself. I'm here because I've been working with these refugees as a volunteer with no other organization but because of what I believe in, how women and children should be treated in any part of the world. And I've seen it when they've crossed the border. I worked with Senator McCallell, and I've seen it once they get out of this so-called facility, this campus-like facility. And I wish so much that the facility was like it's described by the GIO group. I wish that that was the case, but it's not. And I wish it was as nice as it was when we went, when everyone visited. All the people who are commissioners or with the law enforcement are going to investigate. But the truth is, it's not. These women come out of there like the woman who spoke first, lost weight. If you see a before and after picture, they are very much underweight. They are being denied simple supplies. One woman told me a story about how she has to take an empty roll of toilet paper to a guard to ask for another new roll. Another woman talked about how her three-year-old was denied diapers by a guard because the guard told her, "Your child is old enough. She did not need diapers." So, she had to potty train her daughter in prison. Another woman told me a story about how when she went to get her child who had a fever medical help, they were denied, that they were told, "Go back to your room. Your child will be fine." This is not the only case of this happening. Again, I'm not here to speak against the guard, but I know that prisons have incentives to meet quotas as far as not using resources. So, perhaps it should be something about more the administration of the prison. But let's see what else. Again, yes, the food, the toilet paper, the fever. Like I said, I wish it was the way that GIO likes to describe it, but it's not. And again, I'm not here to make up anything or attitude. I'm here to be a voice for the voiceless. I wish so much that you could see the women and children, that you could hear it for yourself, so that you would know what's happening in your backyard, that these are the inhumane things going on with women and children. And again, like I've said before, heaven forbid our women and children from this country ever had to migrate for reasons, whatever, violence or whatever it might be, and got treated the way these women and children are being treated. I know we would never want our wives and your children to be treated this way. So, thank you for your time.
You will not have another chance. If you want to say something, say it.
Morning. My name is Ray Rosette. I have been a public servant of Karnes County for the last 40 years. I have worked in social services. I was a mental health candidate director for 23 years. I'm a licensed social worker, a licensed nurse, and a licensed alcoholism and drug counselor. I am, I will not be associated with an organization that would be violating human rights, children's rights. I am proud to work for GIO. I've been employed for almost three years. I interview the residents every week, and there's not, there isn't such a thing as a perfect workplace, like there isn't a perfect church, because once you join, it becomes imperfect. The stories I hear from the residents is how they were violated and brought to this country, how they had to flee from their country because the children couldn't go to school, because they were afraid they were going to be abducted and stolen, their daughters were being sexually violated, the women, they were extorted. That's the stories I hear. And I would not be working for an organization that would be violating human rights. I'm very proud to be from Karnes County, and I have worked with many people and many capacities, and I've been allowed in people's homes. I've worked in the hospitals. I have been, and I could go on, but there is just a, this HIPAA. And that's where we get caught, and the workers at GIO. There are certain things that we cannot say because we'll be violating people's rights, violating their histories. But my heart goes out to these women and to these children because that facility there is a safe haven for them. For the first time, they can sleep through the night. For the first time, they don't have to be scared that somebody's going to break in and violate them or kidnap them. And I am in favor for the expansion because it gives jobs to single mothers, it gives jobs to geriatricus like me. It gives jobs, and when this oil company dries up, we don't know the residual that's going to be there. We don't know about the studies on the environment, the roads. So, yeah, the oil business might leave us with a lot, might leave us with a lot of health problems. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ruth.
Thank you. Good morning. Thank you for having me here. My name is Selena Moreno, and I'm an attorney with Maldiv, the Mexican American Legal Defense and Educational Club. And I'm here to speak against the expansion. One of the first things I wanted to start out with, to address the comments of the gentleman just spoke, you know, I want to echo those comments to the extent that, yes, these women have come and fled very traumatic violence, and more the reason why, when they're coming here, they should not have to face some of the sexual abuse and harsh conditions that we are seeing within Karnes. Last time I handed out, or one of the previous meetings, I handed out two complaints filed by our office, along with some other offices, including the University of Texas Law School, detailing some of those complaints, and we talked about that. I've heard since that there have been some comments that those allegations were told to the Commissioners to be unfounded. And I'm not sure what, where that misinformation is coming, because the investigation is still open, and I wanted to make sure that you received this directly. This is from a letter from the Department of Homeland Security's Office of Civil Rights and Civil Liberties Division. It's a letter that was dated December 4th in the afternoon, at the same time as last year, so we weren't able to provide this to you. But it very clearly states that this is a matter still under investigation. Any allegations that this investigation has been closed are completely unfounded, and I think that that's something that y'all should consider. And to the extent that some people have not really got these allegations, I guess what I would say, you know, we here obviously have no reason to make up these stories. These are stories of these women that have come, that we've gotten the information from attorney, client, or privilege attorneys that are presenting, many of them who are representing them pro bono. And these are, these are relationships that take time and trust. So, the extent that somebody might have not shared these stories with you, these are very difficult and traumatic incidences, and they have come out through those relationships. And I just ask you to consider that, what is going on here in your backyard? And I wanted to pass this out now. That's okay. Thank you. And I'll just end with, I understand some of the women in the community are talking about jobs, and, you know, and that's a good thing, but at what cost? Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Emma Randalls, and thank you for having me here. I'm from Austin, and I'm here to read a testimony from a child that is detained in Karnes. And I would just like to say, this is anonymous because that child would be afraid of retribution if they were to be named. Every day, we have to check into the rec room three times daily for the count, at 7:30 in the morning, at 4:00 in the afternoon, and at 8:00 at night. If the babies are asleep at those times, you have to wake them up, or they will rent you up. They don't allow the children to have toys in their rooms. They embarrass them by saying they're stolen and take them away. They don't allow to have more than six changes of clothing. If you have more than six changes, they take away anything more. In order to change something that doesn't fit you, you have to send a request and wait two or three weeks for them to resolve. If they do change out your clothes, first they embarrass you by saying, "Everything you are given there is borrowed. You can't stain it, tear it, ruin it, or any other thing, because when we leave, we have to return everything." They're thinking of making this place much bigger, and for what? To hold more immigrant families, because they want to keep more people in these precarious conditions? Because they want to slow down the processing of so many families who are suffering here inside? Because they want to force us to obey the rules of this detention center? Why do they want to make this place bigger? Because they want to keep more families apart? Because they want to keep more families here for up to four months, just to deport them afterward? Because they like to see people who are just looking for refuge suffer? Because they don't put themselves in our shoes for even one moment? Because they destroy the dreams of people looking for refuge and protection, so we don't have to return to our countries and be endangered? And one thing that stands out to me is the fact that a child can perceive the lack of empathy with which they're being treated by this corporation. Thank you.
Good morning. My, oops. Where's...
My, oops, where's my microphone? Hello, my name's Elaine Cohen. I'm a resident of Austin. I'm here today to voice my objection to the expansion of the Karnes City Detention Center. I value the democratic process, and am pleased to participate in this hearing. I also have a message to read from a child who must remain anonymous. I'm simply a via to give voice to the voiceless. This place called a detention center is like a prison for us, because we don't have freedom. We can't leave the room without our moms, or go to the room if we're not, or go out of the room if we're not with our moms, or then write up a bad conduct report on us. They go through our drawers, just like a prisoner. Sometimes, they treat us with kindness, but other times, they don't treat us well due to the fact that some are good and, you know, some are angry. In the beginning, we eat the food, but later, you don't anymore, because it's always the same. For example, for breakfast, they give you eggs and bread and cereal, and most of us kids just don't eat the meal. The good thing about this place is, since there is school, we don't lose a year of classes, and they give us shoes and poor outfits, so we can change our clothes. Three or four families live in one room. It's sad not knowing how long we'll be locked up here. Sometimes, a mom doesn't have enough money to talk with family on the telephone. For example, talking to my dad, except for the three minutes that they give you with the little slip of paper when you first get here. I've been here for three months, and I've only talked to my dad once. My mom earns three dollars, but she uses it to buy soup or popcorn for my brother and me, or the fee to call my aunt, who's going to give us a place to live. The cost of my dad is really expensive, since my brother and I spent seven dollars on talking, and the three dollars only buys two soups and a cookie. It bothers me not to know when we'll get out of here, although I hope we'll be freed. God willing, we'll get asylum.
Christina Parker.
Hello, y'all. Thank you for having me. My name is Christina Parker, and I'm a resident of Austin, Texas, and I work at Grassroots Leadership. We do research and advocacy against the private prison industry. I appreciate the testimony from Ms. Truqueau, from the UT Law Clinic, who said that Karnes County, if you know about the abuses that can happen in the, in the detention center, y'all can be liable. So I'm going to take this opportunity to make sure that you guys do know about the abuses that have happened there. I'd like to tell you first about the Coke County Detention Center that was here in Texas, in Coke County. It was a Gio facility, and it was shut down by the Texas Youth Commission, only after they came on two surprise visits, they did. And they found conditions so bad that they did an audit of it a year, a year later, and decided to close it. The acting director of the Texas Youth Commission, Dimitri Pope, declared that Gio should be ashamed of the facility, and that the Coke County Juvenile Justice Center was a disgrace. She said that because when they, when the TYC inspector came, they revealed shocking conditions, that these included the overuse of pepper spray against the children, a lack of programming and education, feces that was left spread on the walls, and unsanitary and insect-infested food. They also had serious understaffing. As you know, they're in the business of making money, and so they cut costs where they can. I also want to tell you about the Gio Run Immigrant Prison in Pecos, Texas. There are men named Jesus Manuel de Lindo died after being put in solitary confinement. He was put into solitary confinement for complaining about the lack of medical care, something that we've already heard is happening at the Karnes County Detention Center, where they denied a little girl with brain cancer treatment. He died in there of a seizure, and they did that as a retaliation for his complaints. I also want to tell you about the Walnut Grove Facility, that was in Mississippi, also a facility for children and also run by Gio. A federal district judge found that Gio was running one of the worst for-profit youth prisons in the U.S. In his 2012 court order, Judge Reeves said that the Walnut Grove Juvenile Detention Center was, quote, "a picture of such horror as should be unrealized anywhere in the civilized world." In his sweeping and scathing decision, the judge also called the Walnut Grove Facility, which held children as young as thirteen, a, quote, "cesspool of unconstitutional inhuman acts." It was found that the Gio guards subjected the children to excessive violence, including beatings, kicking, punching, and they handcuffed defenseless youth. They were also frequently pepper sprayed in this facility as well. Finally, there's been a lot of talk about jobs and money. I want to, I want to just point out how it is that the private prison lobby, the private prison industry works by getting these contracts, like the one that they have here. They do that by lobbying at the federal level. Gio Group and their main competitor have spent a combined thirty-two million dollars lobbying to get contracts just like these. And if I remember correctly from last week, they're only paying you a fee of a hundred thousand dollars. But they pay a lot more to their lobbyists who work in DC to secure these contracts. You should also know that there's a lot of revolving.
Man more time.
Okay. Thank you.
Bethany Carson.
Hi, my name is Bethany Carson. I work at a nonprofit in Austin, and I'm here to share a testimony from a child inside of the Gio facility. For most people who have entered this place, it's the start of a new life, but it begins badly, because this is a detention center that they call a shelter for immigrants. But only those of us who live here know it's going to change. The staff here treats us poorly. They look at us with pity and revulsion. To begin with, most of the staff, not everyone, treats us as though we were animals, or as though we were criminals who have committed a very serious crime. There are very few Gio employees who understand us, who know what it feels like to be a prisoner. The food that they give us is completely disgusting. They don't cook it properly. It's either raw or burnt. There are times that it isn't edible. That means we have to buy things from the commissary, and the products there are overpriced. When the Gio supervisors come to see how everything is, the Gio workers fill up the refrigerators with cookies, juice, and yogurt even, to make it seem like everything is fine. But after they leave, the refrigerators are practically empty. We can't take anything out of the refrigerator and take it back to our rooms, because they do inspections every week, and if they find anything from the dayroom or the kitchen, they take it and they throw it in the trash and rat you up, because according to them, that is theft. The air conditioning doesn't work in some rooms. It's been eight days without it. They have sent a request, but they haven't fixed anything. The only thing they say is to open the door. When a family member comes to see us, they give us a time limit for being with them, as if we were some kind of delinquents. When someone is really sick or feels bad and goes to the doctor, they just give you acetaminophen, or if not that, they tell you to drink enough water, but most of the time, they just ignore you. Almost all of the babies are sick with colds or infections. The only thing they tell you is to run hot water in the shower, and they'll breathe in the steam. Supposedly, that's a treatment. But it's more likely they're taking in a parasite and getting even sicker. A baby has to have a temperature of a hundred-four before they will give you cough syrup or So I'm here to ask you today, would you put your children in these conditions? What if your kid came home from school saying these things about their cafeteria, or that they felt demeaned by their teachers? The commissioners' visits took place in the presence of guards, where children could fear retaliation for speaking what's really on their minds. What I just read is a direct testimony written by a child inside the facility, who simply wanted to communicate their experience to the outside world. Do you really want to allow the expansion of child detention, even when Karnes County is asked to shoulder the burden of responding to sexual assaults and any future human rights violations that the county did not perpetrate? The detention of children and families in the Gio facility has created unforeseen risks for Karnes County. Accordingly, the county can and should make its own decision, fully evaluating the humanitarian costs, as well as financial and liability risks to the county. Thank you.
Arthur Walters.
Hi, my name is Arthur Walters, and I've been working with Gio Group for over seven years, and I'm speaking against the expansion, and I'll speak on myself. What I would like to add to everything is that there's a lot of staff right there that's working in Karnes. They're very good employees, but this percentage does not. So, for all the stuff that's being said, a lot of it is just for that one little percentage, but there's a lot of staff that's there that are doing the hard work. But because of the staffing, a lot of our problems happen. And I've been in Karnes City, I've been there for ten years, and I've seen it when it was just three gas stations without it's grown to be where it is. And just as a county, I don't like to see this county in the bad press, and it's going to continue to be, especially if you have this expansion, because as a supervisor, that's what our position was over there, we were told to keep the staffing, I don't know, a lot intentionally, to go ahead and provide coffee. So, if this expansion happens, we're going to continue to have this stopping as well. And when this sexual allegation happened, that was due to shortage of staffing as well, and I could have been prepared. I present to you this, which I know, if y'all want to continue to have this county, which I've seen grow, and continue to want to grow into a better county, I suggest, and I vote against the expansion.
Paul Pfeiffer.
Good morning. My name is Paul Pfeiffer. I'm a resident of Karnes County. A few minutes ago, every one of us in this room made a pledge to that flag, and it was completed with the phrase, "with liberty and justice to all." To all. Not to those in the room, not to those in Karnes County, not to those in another nation, not to those in this nation, to all. That is how our founding fathers brought us to this place where we're at today, and I ask myself, are we upholding that? As an American and a Christian, I believe that we must welcome the stranger in need of refuge, rather than hold them in detention. Family detention is not only expensive and inhumane, it also dishonors our proud legacy as a nation that welcomes the world's most vulnerable, especially those fleeing persecution. Detention can re-traumatize a victim of violence, and imprisoning a child, even with his or her mother, will cause severe or permanent psychological damage. Expansion of the facility will only drive up U.S. taxpayer costs associated with detaining families who have presented themselves to immigration authorities in order to hear their cases for persecution heard. We have the chance now to promote both economical and successful community-based alternatives to government detention, such as those operated by nonprofit organizations that provide migrant support services, ensure compliance with immigration court proceedings, help families integrate into their local communities, and allow access to critical health and legal services. My faith compels me to welcome the stranger, reject any expansion to the inhumane practice of family detention, and stand with my fellow Americans in supporting community-based alternatives that treat our immigrant brothers and sisters with dignity and respect. Once again, we all pledged, "with liberty and justice to all." Thank you.
That's all I have.
That's all of the speakers who have signed up to speak. We'll continue with the agenda of the meeting. We have a reading of the minutes. How many have we got? Just two.
From November.
I've read mine, Judge, next time. You're satisfied with both of them? Motion to approve all of the minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Both steps?
Yes, both steps.
Is there any discussion? All in favor of approving the minutes as presented, raise your right hand. Opposed, say it. Five oh four. Item 7A, ratify application to Coke Pipeline Company for seven thousand dollars for grant funds to be used for emergency management grant offered by Susannah Kaliba. Susannah, you got it. Go ahead, tell us what this is, please.
I was approached by a father-in-law of one of our sheriff's officers, who has helped their county make kits for their sheriff's officers that will help them in response to hazmat effects. And he told me about this grant that Coke was, was providing. It's called Helping Heroes, and he applied for it. Honestly, it's the first time I'd ever done it, and I didn't expect to get it. And we got it. So, we have seven thousand dollars that has been graciously, graciously provided to us by Pipeline Company to... I don't expect police officers to be hazmat first responders at all, but there are instances when they may need some protection, and this will help to build a kit for them.
Thank you, Susannah. I think we got this, even not sure that we had applied for it, maybe, or maybe that wasn't exactly right.
Yes, I, I think I did it completely backwards.
But it worked.
I always have to learn things the hard way, but I'll remember it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Maybe a motion to accept the funds as presented by Susannah, and as shown by the application and award by Coke.
I'll make it.
The second. We have a motion and a second to ratify the application and the grant and the use of the funds for the purposes shown in the grant. All in favor, signify by a say a aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say it. All for the five, four, zero against. Thank you, Susannah. We appreciate it. You didn't help her, did you, Mom? Of course not. I know better. Incidentally, this is Judge Saxon, and she's getting close to retirement. We're glad you're here today. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
And thank you for all the years that you've given us in our district court session here.
Thank you.
I personally am familiar with most of it. I was here when she became a judge, and she does a really great job as a judge in our district court. And you might think her, you get my point. She, she's done a lot of things that are good for this, this county and the other four counties in the district also. Thank you. Kind of made on the agenda, there's a proclamation, naming December the nineteenth as the day to commemorate Judge Saxon.
Judge, can I interrupt you for a second? The other district judges wanted to attend.
Oh, sure. Oh, yeah. I'm sorry.
There she comes now. Judge, come on in.
This, this is our other district judge. I'm not sure if that's a compliment.
I'll take that.
I intended, Judge, to be, I've known both of judges, for all the times that they've both been our district judges, they've been a great pleasure for me to be in their court from time to time. We just started to honor Judge Saxon, and I'm pleased that you voted to be here, and we appreciate your carefulness. You're having court today, if I understand, or you're not, and have quit to be in what we're doing. Do this above proclamation.
I have to, Judge.
Okay. Why, why don't you read it?
I will. We've got, I'm waiting on.
Don't do it however you want to. This is Judge Donna Reyes. I didn't say you're many, Judge. I'm sure everybody do it, I do.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioner. First, we would like to extend an invitation to you, Judge Long, and Commissioners Court. We invite you to take part as we celebrate the honorable Stella Saxon's career as our judicial district judge, serving our great county of Karnes and the 218th District Court. As you know, Judge Saxon will be retiring at the end of this year.
You can't cry. Get your breath back.
After serving as district judge for twenty-four After serving as District Judge for 24 years, her last official court date will be served here on December 18th, next Thursday. In her county home and River Gardens. And with that, we come to you today with the proclamation.
Judge Saxon, will you stand? The proclamation reads, "Be it known that whereas for the past 24 years Judge Saxon has served as the 218th District Judge, which includes Karnes, Atascosa, Creo, LaSalle, and Wilson Counties, and whereas Judge Saxon has been and continues to be a champion of women and families, and whereas Judge Saxon is a dedicated advocate for juvenile justice and rehabilitation and services for both juveniles and adults in the five counties she serves, and whereas Judge Saxon is dedicated to preserving the history and integrity of all communities she serves, and whereas Judge Saxon has proven to be dedicated to her communities, to justice, and to the future of South Texas. Now therefore be it resolved that we, the Commissioners' Court and County Judge of Karnes County, Texas, do hereby proclaim December 19th, 2014, a day to commemorate Honorable Judge Stella Saxon for her service to the 218th Judicial District."
An additional one?
Yes.
Yes. Judge Saxon, I think if you would find coming up here that it would be appropriate to present this to you, hoping for it. Thank you very much for all of your time and service here in Karnes County. I've seen y'all as good. Thank you.
I am sufficiently humbled. Little did we know, Mike and I, when we came back here in 1980, that we would have so much love and caring by so many people. So many of you have lifted us up and helped us along the way, and it has been truly a labor of love that I have served for these 24 years. Denise was a childhood friend of my daughter's. She was one of my Girl Scouts, and it's been my pleasure to see her grow as a woman, a mother, a professional, and I couldn't ask for someone nicer to present this to me. To the Commissioners, so much support. I appreciate your kindnesses, your courtesies, and love so much working with everyone here in Karnes County. I understand that this celebration on the 19th is going to be fabulous. Please come and join me in figuring out and enjoying all the surprises that I think are going to be happening on that day. I hear when the... You know, attorneys, attorneys have this thing called attorney-client privilege, and they can't tell anything, their client tells them. But they are the worst secret keepers in the world when it comes to things that other attorneys or other people tell them. So I know some of the things that are in store on that day, and I really invite you all, and I cannot tell you how much I appreciate having been able to serve the five counties, and I do absolutely love Karnes County. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Judge. For the benefit of everybody here that has seen an invitation to this, the court reads, "Celebrate a career of public service, the Honorable Stella Saxon, 218th District Judge. First elected in 1991, Judge Saxon is retiring after 24 years on the bench. Open house will be Friday, December 19th, Karnes County Offices on the Square from 9:00 a.m. through 3:00 p.m. The ceremony will begin at 2:00 p.m. A woman dedicated to her community, to justice, and the future of South Texas, and she's been dedicated to every community that she's touched, not just her own community, believe me. I've not seen anybody any better, and we've been blessed with good judges, and we have two with us this morning that are as good as any we've had, but we've had good judges in the 53 years that I've been here. I hate to even say that. But nonetheless, I've been here and seen them all since then, starting with Judge John F. May, and these two are as good as any we've had. Thank you very much, ladies." Okay, we're moving on to the agenda. Item nine, discuss, approve, disapprove, the amendment and ratification of all gas and mineral lease and memorandum thereof on Block 5 and 6, Block 204. In the town site of Karnes City, Texas, authorize the county judge to execute document, I assume the document means the oil and gas lease, which is...
The amendment.
The amendment to the oil and gas lease.
Yes.
Okay. By... Anna Jones, tell us what it is now.
All right. This is... We were in Commissioners' Court here, I think, in the... Sometime in November, about... This is a parcel of land that was sold as a... On a tax sale. And at that date, the Commissioners' Court did go ahead and sell... Give quick claim the surface to Manuel de Los Santos and his wife, and then the minerals were still left hanging. So we have a lease on this property that was made out by the city of Karnes City for itself and the school. But in fact, the deed that was given to the... When this property was deeded to the county, went to Karnes County for itself and its trustee for the city of Karnes City and the Karnes City Independent School District. So our attorneys have advised us to get an amendment and ratification of that lease and have Karnes County sign it for itself and its trustee, plus having the school and the city sign it. And in this amendment, and also what we're doing, we're correcting a little bit on the description, and then we're also including in here that the undersigned wish to amend said lease to more accurately reflect the lessor's interest in the following, and that each... The undersigned each own a one-third interest in and to all oil, gas, and minerals in and under the lands conveyed, covered by this lease. So does anybody have any questions?
Is there a question concerning the oil and gas lease from anybody?
So I have a... Was this handed this morning, this opinion, and I haven't read it, but it sounds like this is what we're supposed to be part of this opinion.
Can't hear it.
Talk into the mic if you will.
All right. We have an opinion here by an attorney that refers to this, and it says that we should sign this as presented.
There was two ratifications the last meeting, right? This was one that we actually kept, the mineral, the county kept, the other one we...
This was in a deed, and it was never in a foreclosure or a tax sale. It was a deed back in 1985 from the McGuglin to... And that's how the deed read, "To Karnes County for itself and its trustee for the Karnes City ISD and the city of Karnes City." Then it was put on a tax sale, and it was sold to Helen Von Felth, and then in that charity, also the minerals were retained by the entities. And so this is just clarifying that, you know, that Karnes County... It's Karnes County for itself and its trustee, and also stating that the minerals are... Will be divided one-third each for the county, the school, and the city.
This amendment is stating that?
Yes, sir.
The other one... The other time that we came in, we were keeping it all just for the county, right?
No, it was gonna...
It's gonna be split one-third of the...
But with this amendment, it's... You know, we talked about different ways to do it. We've talked about first going out and leasing it, but we have a lease on record that was done by the city and the school. So... And we're amending and ratifying that lease to show that it's Karnes County for itself and its trustee for those two, other two entities. And we are going to have, hopefully, if y'all sign it, if the judge signs it today, we will also have the city and the school sign this, this amendment and ratification.
Dan Cox, your Attorney General opinion that you received on July 30th, that that is addressing the summary of the statement. So it's... This is a court would like to include in section 3405 of the Tax Code, does not authorize the tax unit to reserve mineral interest on property for a taxable purpose, so if you hold such interest at the time of property, you're sold on that section. Any other questions?
I'll make the motion to approve. Item number nine, that was it? I second.
Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same time. All voting for, motion carries.
Thank you. Judge, you'll sign it now, and you'll come back. Thank you all very much.
Item 10 on the agenda is discuss, approve, disapprove, the dissemination of any information concerning the employment opportunities available in Karnes County. The employment opportunities available from the county or county financial officer, assistant in charge of human resources, and IT department authored by me. If there's anybody that is interested in any of those jobs or wishes further information, contact my office, which is here, my secretary, or whoever at the... Do you have information on employment?
I have the budgetary information. I don't have any job descriptions.
Okay. Are there job descriptions that exist?
I believe so.
Where are they?
At one time, the last I heard, that Judge Butler had them, so I don't know if he left them.
We have copies. I think you have...
I know I have a bunch.
That I picked out a minute. Come by the office here if anybody's interested in getting what we have. The salary survey, we'll get it for you. Also provide some job descriptions with two of those.
Correct.
Okay.
Judge Long. Judge Long, the county attorney asked Mike Farm against Lockridge to review and revise the job description. I have that now available, and we can present it to the Commissioners' Court.
You're gonna present it now, or...
We can disseminate it later, whatever you want.
Okay. Let's do it later on. Just... We'll talk about it there for a minute. Thank you. Any other comments? If not, we'll move on to item 11. Discuss, approve, disapprove lease with Bitney Bold Global Financial Services or Connect Plus DM475. If anybody knows what that is, stop by my office later on and tell me. Digital mailing system located at 200 Dees Caver, DM475. Digital mailing system will replace current. WOW dash way on postage machine, which has been discontinued. Monthly cost for new lease is $288 a month. Current monthly lease cost is $293 a month, so we're saving $5 a month. These costs are through the state of Texas, buyboard pricing. Authorize... And it's to authorize the county judge to execute the lease agreement offered by Low One Cash, Low One, you want to expound on that front?
There's not much to expound on. I was pretty detailed in the item. We need to replace it. The old machine is no longer viable. They cannot get reports to repair it, so again, this one will save the county money on a monthly lease. I had sent the contract to Mr. Hancock, and he did look it over.
Is it for your concern? Or is there a motion to approve or disprove the lease?
I'll make a motion to approve. Agenda item 11 is presented and allow the county judge to execute. I second it.
Is there any further discussion from anybody on the Commissioners' Court? If not, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same time. All voting for. I'm not gonna sign it right now. Item 12 on the agenda is discuss, approve, disapprove, renewal application for auto liability, auto fiscal liability, general liability, public official liability, and law enforcement liability. Insurance coverage is through Detective's Association of Counties. Authorize county judge to execute renewal application offered by Low One Cash.
We have had our liability coverages through Texas Association of Counties for over 15 years. This is just the renewal application. We don't have quotes yet. We will have that after they process the application. The head of the governing body must execute the application, so that's what I need you to do now, the court to authorize that, and you to sign it for me.
Move on. Move the previous cause.
I couldn't tell you that off the top of my head, sir.
I... I kind of think I want to know too, before we authorize this, I... When is this necessary to be passed?
Our renewal date is February, but of course, they need the application earlier to be able to process and correctly indemnify.
How much earlier?
Excuse me?
How much earlier do they want to... They probably wanted it last week, but...
They want it as soon as possible.
Okay, we're gonna give it to them as soon as possible. But when is that gonna be? Is there gonna be a date that if we don't get it to them, that it won't be issued on time?
Uh, they...
I don't like that kind of business. I've been in business all my life. I've never let anybody do that to me.
Do we send a renewed application and then approve it after it comes back?
Correct. They will issue quotes based on the application.
We just need to authorize the submission of the application.
Correct. We are not accepting insurance at this point.
All right. Do I hear a motion to ask for application, the submission of the application?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it. Any discussion? If not, all in favor of the motion, signify by... If not, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Aye, all opposed, same sign. All voted for, motion carried. Item 13 on the agenda, discuss, approve, disapprove, renew the agreement for release of driver records to government entities with Texas Department of Public Safety authorized county judge to execute the agreement, but one of them sought it by you again.
We have an agreement with the Department of Public Safety regarding driver's records, that we can access their database to see the driving records of potential employees, be it Roden Bridge, be it Sheriff's Department, et cetera. You cannot access this information without a contract through DPS and our contract indicates that we will not release that information outside of our governmental entity.
Do we have a contract with them now?
Yes, sir, it's fixing to expire and that's why we...
When is fixing to?
I believe it's a calendar year contract, which would be December 31st.
Have you got a copy of the new contract, the proposal?
Yes, sir, I do, I had emailed it to you.
I don't need my, I'll look at when you hand one to.
Okay, well, I would have thought Erica would have printed it for you, but...
She may have, and I didn't look at it because I didn't think it was important. In the future, make sure I give them if you will.
Okay.
And Erica will appear to execute your application however, but I'm new and if I get traced around on my desk, it wouldn't be anybody's fault with mine and I was fully accepted, but make sure I give you. We need to pass this probably today.
I'll make that motion, that we approve number 13 as presented and allow the judge to execute.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion concerning a motion, I'll second. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Aye, all opposed, same sign. All voted for. Okay, item 14 on the agenda, discuss, approve, disapprove, replacement of two computers for the tax office counter. The old computers run Windows XP and are no longer supported and are a security threat because updates cannot be installed. This $2,000 expenditure was approved in the 2014-2015 tax office budget, but was transferred to the new IT director, which has not been hired. I'll say who has not been hired, thinking ID directors of which. There was Brenda, you have a second, Brenda?
Yes, sir, the two, the two computers at the counter, Jeff Toronto's told me those are the oldest computers in the county, the only two that's still running on Windows XP, and we are on the same server as the appraisal district, so, and a virus did get on there somehow, I don't understand all that, but Jeff caught it, and the expenditure was approved in the budget process, but again, was moved to the other department for them to do all the purchasing, but we really need to get those purchased.
Why would it move to the others?
Well, it's my understanding that all the computer things were moved to the IT department, that they would take care of all the purchasing.
Well, we don't have an IT director.
Right, so that's why I'm asking if I can go ahead and get these computers.
Are those the only computers you need to replace?
Yes, everything else, everything else is good.
Not for the surprise?
Not to my knowledge, it'll be a surprise.
Motion on the court.
I'll make the motion to approve item number 14 as presented.
Second, any further discussion? All in favor of the approval for the transfer that's necessary to the proper place and to complete that expenditure, signify by saying aye. Aye, all opposed, same sign. All voted for, motion carried, thank you.
Thank you.
Item 15, discuss, approve, disapprove, budget for the Christmas party, that's most important my number, except donation from John Banks. John, did you bring, please, I saw him a year ago, he must have left. Did he leave his money?
Yes.
Budget for a $1,000 donation, was that how much is, is donations worth?
Yes, sir.
Uh, Christmas. It doesn't work, part means party.
I'll make a motion to approve item 15, Brenda.
Motion second to approve, item 15 to approve money for the budget for the Christmas party, is that enough money for a Christmas party?
Not really.
But there'll be other funds available?
Yes, there is plenty. What we do with that money is we purchase the food with it. Roden Bridge Department has really come forward and come through this year with some wonderful door prizes. Sometimes in the past, we use some of that money for door prizes, but it'll be used for food supply and then whatever else we need.
All right.
Any leftover money will be used as door prizes.
Okay. Motion to approve the budget for the Christmas party, I guess it's a thousand dollars, that's how much money we have.
Yes, sir.
As I can tell. But y'all were still taking donations from anybody else?
Well, the door prizes, but for cash to use for the party, we have to have it approved in front of commissioners' court in order to spend it. So, if you want to donate money, it will have to go toward a door prize, not toward the expenses. And ask the auditor of that question on why, because I see wheels are turning and asking why not?
Well, they're turning because I made a donation, there was a cave donation, and nobody said anything to me about that requirement.
Okay, I did not receive that in my office.
And, well, I can't identify the $100 bill that I gave to them.
That donation, Judge Long, wasn't that for Judge Saxon's retirement party?
I don't know, it was for whatever we go.
Well, that's where it's going.
That worked. Okay, thank you for straightening me out. I don't, I guess we need a motion, we got a motion just to, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye. Aye, all opposed, same sign. Thanks. 16, discuss, approve, and disapprove, hiring of two full-time employees for County Treasurer's Office, annual salary of $31,328.31 for each employee, authored by Luanne.
Jeff, do we need to, being number 23 is kind of related with this, I guess, we need to get those discussed with attorney first or, and then come back? Mr. Hancock?
We have 22 and 23.
Well, 16, 17, 18, 19, 20, and then we have 22. But we go to 21 first, take care of Mr. Banks, and go in executive, I would like to go in executive session first, we've discussed before we go any further with 16, 18, and 19, if the court chooses.
I would like to have the right to present my case before you go into executive session. I think it's only the fair thing to do. I asked for extra help during the budget process and it was taken out. My full-time position was also taken out during the budget process. So from September 12th to November 5th, I was put in that office by myself to run payroll for, as of Friday, we paid 188 people, $35 million. I need the help, I don't think my case with Mr. Hancock should have any barrier over this decision. It's a good business decision, we need extra help in the treasurer's office. County auditor has two full-time positions, JP 3 has two full-time positions and a part-time position, JP 1 has two full-time positions, I have myself in one full-time position to take care of $35 million, 188 employees, quarterly reports, monthly reports, human resources, which I understand that's gonna go out. There are some things that I still have to do in my office, so I don't think you need to go into executive session here on one side of the story, you need to understand that I need help in that office. The citizens of this county have asked for a full audit because they are concerned with the handling of the county finances, I'm here to ask for that help. Again, I was denied that help during the budgetary process by Richard Butler and County Attorney Luanne Casper, were the only two people that did that budget, you fought for, excuse me, Judge Long, you were not here, approved of that budget, knowing I had no help in that budget.
Well, I was not part of any of that.
Yes, sir, I corrected myself, I corrected myself, thank you.
I'm not sure that there's anybody that's responsible solely or jointly with anybody else other than the court as a whole, of course, adopted the budget and the judge at that point. There were many, many items on the budget that probably one or another person didn't approve of, but nonetheless, that is the budget that we're bound to use for this, this year and are working on it this time. We'll be starting next budget, probably quick, very soon, maybe January 1st, and work the whole year of the next budget. This one, I think, control this year.
From what, I do believe, I understand there was a $250,000 unencumbered fund in there to use as necessary when I, Richard Butler had put the item back on the agenda to fund a part, I'm sorry, a full-time position in my office, that's where the money is being expensed from and that is where I'm asking this money be expensed from also.
I'm going to put all of this on a, I'm going to ask the court to not take any action on it today, to put it all on a work session that we will have in the next, probably the next week, sometime next week, I would say probably Wednesday of next week, depending a little bit on everybody looking and seeing what their schedule is and what they've got scheduled, and we'll have a work session concerning these expenditures and what we're going to do about it. This is due to me, all of it. I'm not dodging because I don't do that, but we need an opportunity to discuss this and we will have one in a work session and then take action, we'll have time to take action before the end of the month, one way or another, of what we're gonna do about it. When would you plan to hire someone?
Tomorrow.
No, don't be silly.
Oh, and yeah.
We're in a, we're in a serious meeting.
We have, I've had, I have five applicants for a position that I have filled now, and there are three that I would like to reconsider on that, so it would be at least two weeks' notice that they would have to get on there, so, yeah, I would love to have a workshop and present my case, I don't have a problem doing that at all, and then have that decision made quickly so we can get somewhere by the first of the year.
I agree with you, Val, you didn't additional person in your office, I mean, that's not the issue, so I agree with that.
No, no. Herr, is there any problem with us scheduling this for a workshop? These various items about the money and obviously, they haven't been discussed in open court.
There's not a problem.
If there's any more to it, there's, is there any way we could hear the lawyer, executive session about the lawsuit, I would appreciate that, or do you want to reschedule that through the other day? No, I'd rather do it with him here today and not make him come back for another meeting.
Judge Butler, if I might, scheduling...
I'm Judge Butler.
I'm sorry.
I'm walking.
Judge Long, Judge Long.
No problem.
Scheduling for, for a workshop is not a problem, provided you give the notice, this required, that's, that's fine.
Which is a regular approved, that notice.
Yes, and as long as you don't take action at the workshop, but reserve it for your next commissioners' court meeting, there's no problem taking up this issue and allowing Ms. Malone to make any further statements she wants to the court at that workshop session.
All right, is there anything else we should do in connection with that at this meeting?
Not if you're tabling it. If you're, if you're tabling this, you can have a workshop and take it up again later, there, there's not, there's, no further action is, is required. The one thing I would add is from, from talking with Judge Butler, the position Ms. Malone had asked to add to her office during the last budget wasn't related to treasurer's duties, but related to, at handling the, the human resources responsibilities of the county, that's what Judge Butler has, has, has told me and what he'll testify to at the hearing we have scheduled next week. In district court.
Yes, I understand. Any other questions from any of the courts? Any problem with, we'll need a motion to reschedule, any of these items, do we need to reschedule? 16, 17, 18, 19, 25, though. Two, any of the, just five, 331? No, 320. All right, five items. 16, 17, 18, 19, 20, that we reschedule for a workshop meeting. And I'd say right now for next Wednesday, but I'm not sure, I'll check and get in touch with each of the commissioners and that's what I'm looking toward, and if there's a problem, any of the commissioners have of being available, please let me know as soon as you can. If you have any comments about this, well, let me know also, but at this point, I intend to schedule a workshop on Wednesday to discuss all of these matters. Do you have a time? Does the, does the court, any of the court members have a problem with time?
Nine, nine AM.
Nine, that's fine, but suit me fine, and that's when, that's when we schedule workshop.
Right, all right, thank you, Judge.
Thank you, Val.
Thank you, Val.
Is that going to be open for everybody?
Well, some may be and some may not be, and there may be some things that we have to talk about in executive session, because it'll be about personnel or workshop. Well, same thing, you can have some things that you have to talk about that are prohibited to be in, in open session, and I don't know whether we will, I'll see how I schedule it and look at the schedule, is all I can tell you, it'll be posted, and it will say, at this point.
If it's open for everybody, then it will be posted?
Yeah, whether it's open or closed, it'll be posted. It'll be posted if we have a meeting, that's what I'm saying.
Well, I just want to know if I want to drive all the way from this house into Karnes County here to...
Well, I can only tell you that we'll be tending county business if we have a meeting, and it may or may not be open in some parts of it.
Oh, part of it is.
Not the whole meeting, it's not a big coverage.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We're going to item 21, judiciary 21. Discuss, approve, disapprove, to extend the contract to the Lewis Tax Collection Firm, presentation of proposed contract from firm representative. It was authored by John T. Banks, is John here?
John, John stepped away to take a phone call and looking for him, you want to move on to number two?
Okay, we'll go on to 22 and come back to 21. 22 is an executive closed session, is authorized under section 551.071 of the Texas Government Code for consultation with county attorney and outside counsel regarding the Hancock-Malone pending in district, State District Court, Orange County, Texas, authored by Michael Chauncey. So with that, I guess we'll go in my office.
Do you have a time to go in?
Do you want?
We have to document the time.
Yeah, whatever time it is. Will we go document anybody, everybody's watch, but I, leave your mind. All right, I've got 10:33, so we're going into executive session. Do you want? Okay, we'll need some extra chairs, I don't know.
We've got four in here, Judge, there's five in here, there's a, six.
Do you want us out there?
That would be good, Valentine Christmas, if you don't mind.
That would be good, Valentine Christmas, if you don't mind.
The commissioners' court is weekly, pending in open session at eleven, nineteen, and a half. No action was taken by the court while we were in executive session.
Well, the commissioners' court is weekly, pending in open session at eleven, nineteen,
disapproved to extend the contract to the Delaware Tax Collection Firm. Presentation
and a half. No action was taken by the court while we were in executive session.
and a half. No action was taken by the court while we were in executive session. of proposed contract from firm representative authored by John T. Banks.
My apologies for not being present when you called me earlier. I almost was there, and I just slipped away for five seconds.
Okay. You were out collecting, detecting.
Yeah. Doing these very well. Commissioners, Judge, I appreciate the opportunity to come and talk to you. What I handed out is a snapshot of the collection effort. And I'm going to go through a little bit of what we do to achieve these numbers. But what you'll see in the spreadsheet or the little paper that I created is a historical overview of where we are in the collections. As you can guess, and as you know from the monthly reports that you receive from your tax collector, the levy is not necessarily exponentially increasing, but significantly increasing. Your most recent, to 2013 levy topped $11 million. The turnover, and you can see, I've got six years of statistics going from right to left for most recent year, to the '08 tax year on the far left column. But your levy had topped eleven, and I think this year, I don't have the final number, but I know it's close to 20 million. The turnover, and that's the third column, the third row down, reflects the amounts that you give over to your delinquent tax lawyer to collect, and those haven't increased over the last two years significantly. Last year, you gave me $243,000 to collect. Prior year, $207,000. But you can see that there's some level of increase that I think is consistent with the growth that you've seen in the levy. What I tried to do was to show you the actual numbers and not try to take credit for, take advantage of, the economic explosion that you've experienced with the oil and gas industry. But to say, here's what you've given us, and here's what we've collected. And I think you'll see that we've been fairly consistent. I use these numbers in, you know, touting our efforts when we're trying to pick up new business. But you can see in the twelve-month breakdown, and I'm looking down at that fourth row, where I go in and I say, here's the collection results, and that is, about every dollar that you give us, in the first year, we collect almost 75 percent. And it ranges from 73, mid-73, up to 77 percent. But over those last five years, the lowest we had was 73.5. And again, that's 73.5 cents of every dollar that you gave us, we collected in the first year. Now, what I've also shown, as you go down the table, the balances as of the most recent tax report, and that would have been November 30th, the balances, and you can see that, you go back to the '08 tax year, you've got, of the $139,000 that you gave me to collect, we've collected all but $6,173. And you can just go across, you'll see the sixty-two oh-three. Probably what is most significant, most important as a taxing entity, is what do we have available? What's in our coffers? And that is the bottom row that you see, and what you can look at. And again, you know, I'd like to say that a strong delinquent tax collection effort results in an increase in current years, but so does economic upturn like you've experienced. And you've got folks that are paying. Now, I will tell you that there are exceptions to the rule, and that is, back when I started working for the county, I think that was in '05, had some entities as already as '02. I don't think that I would get more than, maybe a $10,000 account, that was huge. And I know last year, we got three accounts that were over $100,000, and two have been collected, one's under a payment agreement. So, there's things like that where it slipped through the cracks most, well, not most. All of those are related to oil and gas industry. The collections that we, that I wanted to point out as far as what you can look at and see what's in your coffers, very bottom row, you can see for the '08 tax year, on every hundred-dollar bill, that you, this isn't just my effort, this is also including the collection effort at the tax office and the folks involved throughout, at all stages. For every hundred-dollar bill, $99.80 has been collected. So, there's 20 cents out of a hundred-dollar bill in that year, and it just goes up, or it's fairly consistent in the $99 and change range. So, you've got strong collections. You know, if I'm, to kind of capsulize as far as the collection effort, the things that are consistent are the folks in the call center that I have that work the account for you, that make the calls. And one of the things that I had just told you years ago, and prior members of the court, is that when we came in to get the business, we said, hopefully we won't embarrass you. We won't be Nazi stormtroopers trying to come in and kick doors down. We'll be effective in getting taxes collected, but you won't have people lined up at the door to complain about our approach. And I think we followed through on that. And we do make an effort to go out. Personally, I know I go around and see a lot of business owners and knock on doors and work with them if they've got a genuine hardship or cash flow issue. We'll try to work with them. And we don't make the emphasis to see how many properties we can sell at the tax sale. In fact, if you were here last week, on Tuesday, we had a tax sale. And you can see, even of the ones that filtered down and got to the tax sale, the majority of those were paid and pulled, and there are only a few. And usually, it's airship property where you've got an individual that, maybe there's 15 or 20 people that have an interest in the property, no one wants to pay all of the taxes. Those are the properties we end up going to sell them in most instances. But what we try to do is apply, what we kind of use the buzzword is a personal approach, and that's just common sense and working with folks and being respectful to them and not trying to hammer them and drive them into the dirt. There's going to be people who have legitimate hardship issues, and there's going to be people who just don't place priority on paying taxes, that want to make sure that, you know, they've got tuition to send their kids to do. And to me, that's not a hardship. So, we have to talk to them and kind of figure out what the reason is. But we work with folks through the call center, through personal visits. We end up filing suit. Those things don't change. What probably has changed is just the ability to network through the years. And I, and, you know, I will tell you, my office is able to be effective because of the relationships that we have at the sheriff's office. And when we call and ask for help, not having any hesitation in providing a deputy to either handle a tax sale or to do whatever we need. Working with folks at the appraisal district to get maps when we have tax sales, to help us locate property that may be difficult to locate, to work with the folks at the tax office that constantly are on our call to bone to ask or provide tax statements and payoff figures. And networking through the years has allowed us to, I think, continue with these numbers that we've achieved. And I'm here today to, because my contract ends on December 30th, or 31st, I'd like to continue to be able to run an office and pay for the lines up in Austin. So, I am, I'll continue regardless. But I would like to continue to represent Orange County. It's been an honor. It's worked for you. I think if you hold the folks, you know, we represent everyone that's collected in that Orange County tax office. If you hold our clients, if you hold the folks at the district clerk's office, or the sheriff's department, or the tax office, I think one thing you're going to find is that, as attorneys, we don't lose sight of who the client is, and we recognize that we're providing a service and, you know, we're going to always try to accommodate specific requests as long as it's not targeting an individual. But we try to be respectful at all levels to the folks that we work with in the other administrative offices and to the taxpayer. You know, I'm not coming in hat in hand. I think we've earned the right to continue to represent you, and certainly would like that opportunity. Now, I will tell you with regard to the contract, and I sent this to the county attorney, and I think I copied Erica and some other folks. But substantively, the contract is the same. It is 15 percent statutory fees, and as I think most of the courts are aware, but just for the record, we're one of the few law firms that you don't have to pay. There's a statutory mechanism that allows for the delinquent taxpayer that we work with to, or that has the delinquent account, to pay our 15 percent attorney's fee. So, if they owe $100 in taxes, they're going to pay an additional $15 in collection fee. That's paid by them. So, that remains the same. I know there's a window there for it to go from 15 to 20 percent. We've maintained it at 15 percent the entire 11, 13 years that I've been in the county. So, that remains the same. The extension is consistent with the last extension that the court provided, and that's a three-year extension. And so, having said that, I think all the other terms are identical, with the exception of just the termination date. And, you know, if there's specific questions, I'm more than happy to address those. And if I don't have an answer, certainly I can get an answer in short order. But that's all I have. Now, you've got a busy topic, so.
John, I just wanted to let you know and let everyone know that you all done a great job for us. I don't have a problem with it. All the years that we've known you, you've always been excellent.
I appreciate that.
I would like to make the motion to approve item number twenty-one as presented.
I second it. Have we got a proposed contract?
Yes, sir. I'll give it to you. But there's an actual, the original, if you all do approve it also.
Mr. Sec, you recommend Purdue?
Yes, sir.
Is anybody here from the school or the city tax collection people? Okay. We have a motion, we have a motion in a second to approve the execution of this contract. Is there any other discussion? There is none. I call for a vote. All in favor of extending the contract for David Brandon Fielder Collins, indicate so by writing in your right hand. All of those same side, all of them report.
Appreciate your support and opportunity to work for you. I'll sign that right there. I'm just going to make an extra copy. I'll get out of the way. Appreciate it.
Tax collectors' report out of twenty-four on the agenda. I looked at an app when we came out, but the election will be done.
This is my report for November. Collected for the county current taxes, $825,975.30. Year-to-date, $1,348,234.20 for a collection rate of 5.43 percent. Delinquent taxes for the county MNO, $7,934.37. Year-to-date, $22,926.41 for a collection rate of 8.92 percent. County INS collections for the month of November, $73,082.34. Year-to-date, $119,297.41 for a collection rate of 5.44 percent. Delinquent taxes for the month of October, $637.39. Year-to-date, $2,467.77. Road and Bridge for the month of November, uh, month, uh, November, excuse me, $122,074.96. Year-to-date, $199,283.17 for a collection rate of 5.27 percent. Delinquent taxes, Road and Bridge for the month of November, $1,435.94. Year-to-date, $4,732.83 for a collection rate of 10.28 percent. Rural Fire for the month of November, current taxes, $41,580.94. Year-to-date, $67,877.55 for a collection rate of 5.29 percent. Delinquent taxes, Road and Bridge for the month of November, $729.4 cents. Year-to-date, $2,361.89 for a collection rate of 10.42 percent.
Good. Thank you. Adam twenty-five, discuss action regarding treasurer's report. Oh, we didn't have the wrong one. Let me get that one.
I sent an email to Erica yesterday. I am not prepared to do my financial report today. I want it back on the December 31st agenda. And while I'm up here, let me get the road and bridge. This is just the road and bridge report Michael had laid. I need to step back.
The handout that treasurer gave to the commissioners' court, dated December 8, 2014, I will thus be presenting my financial report today for the following reasons. During my recent reconciliation of the county bank statements, there were general interests made at the recommendation of the outside auditing firm, A B I P. For the fiscal year 2013 audit, these interests, these entries corrected the non-receiving of funds. These adjustments were presented as part of the report given by Janet Pittman with A B I P. But Janet was leaving. I asked her to send me the adjustments by email so that I could make the proper adjustments in my bank manager accounting program. I never received an email from her. I also never received information from the county auditor, LaWanna Casper. It wasn't until I began the reconciliation of the September bank statements that I noticed the adjustments. I had to email LaWanna S. for them. Because of the lack of communication from the auditor's office and the outside auditor's office, I was unable to make the adjustments to my bank manager books. Therefore, my books will not match the budgetary county books. These adjustments will be considering outstanding until December. It doesn't say one year. One of the adjustments was to the H A B A election fund of $6,000.
8th, 2014, I will thus be presenting my financial report today for the following reasons. During my recent reconciliation of the county bank statements, there were general entries made at the recommendation of the outside auditing firm, A B I P. For the fiscal year 2013 audit, these entries corrected the non-receiving of funds. These adjustments were presented as part of the report given by Janet Pittman with A B I P. But Janet was leaving, I asked her to send me the adjustments by email so that I could make the proper adjustments in my bank manager accounting program. I never received an email from her. I also never received information from the county auditor, LaWanna Casper. It wasn't until I began the reconciliation of the September bank statements that I noticed the adjustments. I had to email LaWanna S for them. Because of the lack of communication from the auditor's office and the outside auditor's office, I was unable to make the adjustments to my bank manager books. Therefore, my books will not match the budgetary accounting books. These adjustments will be considering outstanding until December. Doesn't say what year. One of the adjustments was to the H A B A election fund, $6,285. This account has been overdrawn for some time. The figure doesn't show an overdraft figure, but that follows it. I wasn't told if this was a write-off or what. After emailing LaWanna and questioning this, she told me the money was moved to the general fund county election expense. It is very important that I be informed of any J E done by the auditor, J E in caps, so that I can make the necessary adjustments to the bank manager program. I also sent an email in August asking that checks dated back as far as July 2012 be voided so that they would not be a part of the fiscal year 2014 audit. My email went unanswered until recently. Of course, she had questions on some of them. She needs to respond to my request in the town of the manager. If you are going to hold me solely responsible for the books, the county auditor needs to be directed either by Commissioner's Court or her supervisors, Judge Saxon and Judge Rayes, to communicate all adjustments made by her office to me directly. First time I've seen this. I assume first time in your court scene. At the end of case, Adam. Well, 25. 25 discuss action regarding Treasury report. Is there any action or anything, any member of the court wishes to take? Show no action. 26 payable bills.
Included in this cycle of accounts payable, if you'll turn to page three, items of importance out of normal operations for the EMS jail facility out of Capital Outlay. The total in this budget is $10,571 that's being paid from the budgeted figures in this cycle. For the jail tower, $1,221. For the courthouse phase 1B, $765. And for the jail facility itself, $446,335.1. You go on page four. Turn it off. There is a payment to Holt Company of Texas.
I don't believe you, sir. Yeah.
There is a payment under the waste recycle facility category for $25,000. That is for a used backhoe that has been purchased for use out of the facility. Okay, I must have battery problems. It's blinking. Is that what it means?
Battery trouble.
Can you talk loudly? Okay, on page five, we have our annual legislative contribution to Karnes County Historical Society, On page eight, it's the Road and Bridge Department expenditures. The total amount in this cycle for materials is $452,432.52. In that total is a payment to Southern Roots Vegetation for $33,150. That is for brush application spray on all county roads. The total for this bill cycle is $1,076,157.51.
I'm sorry, I don't see that. Where's, what paper you on?
The very last page. Or it'd be next to the last page in your.
Well, I, you know, it's hard to tell. They have numbers.
Page 12.
And that figure is what?
$1,076.
I know, I can read it. I won't know what it's for.
That's the total bills being paid in this cycle.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Any questions? One on the JP software, right for JP for the, on page, page two, there's a registration fee just for Hill Country Software. Is that going to be, is that a yearly fee, or is that going to be something, was that just training?
That is, that is just training. They have an annual training in November that all clients are eligible to attend for any new updates.
Any other questions? Thank you, LaWanna.
I make the motion to pay the bills as presented, item number 26.
Your second.
I'll say it.
Any discussion by the collectors? All in favor of the motion, sign it behind by a rising of right hand. All of those same side. All of them report. Okay. Next, Adam. 27, reported fees, fines, money collected by the following departments, county clerk, district clerk, county attorney. Just start and go down those. So county clerk?
I don't have mine ready. I had an issue with the software reconciling it. They're making some changes on some of the ways that we enter the payments, and so it screwed the whole report. So they're working on that this morning. I hope that it will be done by this afternoon.
District clerk?
Yeah. Providing to all the county. Criminal reports for the month of November. Grantful $1,056 left, check dispersed $4,741.40 for a total of $16,340.
Thank you. County attorney?
Thank you, Detective, for your quick report. Your desk there.
Judge, look like this.
I found one that looked. What do you do? I'd love to see one. Here's one. This is from, I guess, your office or county attorney's office. Hot check collections. I'm not sure what's been reported before, so I have a hard time knowing what I need to report. Erp, do you know what's been reported previously?
No, no. I just, she gives out the forty's, but usual same form, so I need to change it, I will.
I don't know whether it needs changing or not. I just, hot check collections, it shows monthly, September 3,100. That should have been reported. I assume it had been. November is $4,423.43. The year-to-date, hot check collections, $32,617.55. Court costs, November, $7,2055. Year-to-date, $6,517.57. Total money's collected by the county attorney's office for the year through November 30th of 2014, $39,129.32. Year-to-date, last year at this time was $36,138.12. That's the report. I haven't known that one, too. Do we have four? I've got four. Three six, uh, three six three and three six four, exactly, three six two, where's one? You gonna read them all out? Yeah. Read them all. Well, JP report for the month of December, or November 2014, new cases filed, JP 1 was 283. Total retained by the county is $18,840.13. Total remitted to the state was $10,042.77. Total jail credit community service, $825.50. Total revenue collected for JP 1, $29,708.40. JP 2, total new cases filed for the month was 104. Kept fines and court costs and other amounts collected, kept by the county, $11,087.91. Remitted to the state, $6,500.19 for a total of $17,588.10. JP 3, total cases filed for the month of November, our number of cases filed, 139. Total retained by the county is $23,283.58. Total remitted by the state to the state, $8,945.40. Total revenue collected, $13,228.62. JP 4, new cases filed was 62. Total cases retained, total retained by the county, $10,070.51. Total remitted to the state, $4,809.49. Total revenue collected, $14,880. That's all the JP reports. Monthly report, Carter Wilson, juvenile probation department, Carter County. Case level data, number of juveniles beginning of the month, seven. Number of new probationers during the month, three. Number of terminations and completions, two. Number of new referrals during the month, former referral that's come back apparently, one. BE ISP data, number of juveniles beginning of the month, they're all zeros. Number on deferred prosecution, five. Number on formal probation, three. Number on ISP, zero. Number of pending referrals, eighteen. Funds collected, item C. Supervisory fees, $25. Drug tests, $35. That's the amount of fees that should be collected was $30. Percentage of collections, eighty-three percent. And signed by Nivea Smith, F I fourteen. Special projects, who's that? I don't need to.
I'm looking for Helen, but she's not here today. Okay, this is for the determination permits. We collected $1,825. We paid out to the engineers for a footprint of $800, a total of $1,025 came in, and then on the OSSF permits.
What's the O S S F? I don't even, don't understand that one.
Well, that's like the.
What does it stand for? What does the O S S F stand for?
Okay, this is not mine. I'm reporting it for her.
Okay.
Okay, but it's like, I'm.
Ask her to call, ask her to just call me and tell me.
Okay, I really think it stands for the oil company, it's the oil companies and the that's what the collections are for. And $1,700 in for collected inspection fee of $640. TCDQ is $40, and then we took in $1,020. Thank you.
Thank you.
The OSSF, Judge Long, is separate permit, onsite separate.
Septi, uh, septi.
O site separate.
Well, how, what TCDQ?
The State Agency of Environmental.
Well, okay, I understand that State Agency, what State Agency is it?
The Commission of Environmental Quality, and they, they oversee.
What does the C stand for? What does the C?
State Agency's Commission.
The National Commission on Environmental Quality.
I worked with them quite a bit in my previous.
Okay, all right. You're telling me more than I wanted to know. I just want to know what TCDQ is this for. I've never worked for any agency, so I don't know things like this. Cheers to the board. Cheers.
Good morning. This is the Karnes County Sheriff's Office, November 2014, monthly call report assaults. We received 14. Domestics, 17. Disturbance, fights, 29. Criminal mischief, six. Criminal trespass, three. Assist DMS on their calls was 121. Fire calls, 24. Escorts, 11. Lose livestock, 27. Prisoner transports, 66. Request to speak to an officer, 177. Road hazards, 54. Suspicious activity, 21. Suspicious subjects slash vehicles, 40. Thefts, 10. Burglaries, 8. Warrant service, 14. Welfare checks, 11. Seal standby is 11. Miscellaneous calls, 183. Reckless drivers, 55. Traffic stops, 1,085. Citations, 389. Warnings, 433. Arrests, 93. The second page is our housing. Today, we house 43. Also, I want to let Commissioner's Court that are, I know y'all are asking about our licensing weight deputy. He is now in full service and working in Karnes as far as working the drug traffic.
1,085 traffic stops. What percent are your citations for issuing tickets on those? And how many, do you have a breakdown for?
I don't have a breakdown, just the warnings, but I can get them to you.
You don't have any for the county roads itself, not so much of the main highway?
Okay, I can get them to you.
Okay.
Not a problem.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Joining on your jail population, you're 42 right now, and you have 27 at the other facility jail. If, before the jail gets built, you have a plan to take people, we max out there, do you have a plan to send where to?
We still have our contract in effect with Wilson and Lightwell County.
Wilson, all right. Thank you, Tony.
Thank you.
You have this?
Two. Probably eight.
Okay, monthly report for, uh, Karnes County EMS, we had a hundred and twenty-two dispatch requests, uh, resulting in a hundred and twenty-nine patient contacts, uh, transported a hundred and five patients, uh, had twenty refusals from patients, five canceled calls, uh, seven multi-patient calls, uh, four air evacuations, four out-of-county transports, uh, we didn't have any fire or hazmat standbys this month. Uh, year-to-date calls, fourteen hundred and sixty-two. Our collections for this month, uh, Medicare collected seven thousand, nine hundred and ninety dollars and sixty-three cents. Excuse me. Our other insurance collected fourteen thousand, three hundred and forty-five dollars and sixty-four cents. Uh, total collections for the month, twenty-two thousand, three hundred and thirty-six dollars and twenty-seven cents. And, uh, bringing our year-to-date collections to three hundred and sixty-two thousand, six hundred and nine dollars and twenty-four cents.
How much have you billed out version collecting?
Um, we have billed out, uh, about double of what that number is, so six hundred and fifty thousand, rounding that, that number. Um, it's not an exact on number, I was looking at that today, I just got the new report in this morning, about twenty minutes before I came in from our billing company, um, but I can't get that number to you.
Can we?
Yes, sir.
Anybody else have a question?
Thank you. Thank you.
Round of twenty-eight on the agenda report from Rosebridge Department.
That was the folder that I handed you, Judge Mike Hadley for a document.
You can't under, uh, this is what she gave us.
Folder.
The folders, it's right here. I'm just going to schedule this to come from Mike when he's back at the next meeting. Does anybody have a question they want to ask the man? He's not here to talk about it.
He said to call if he had questions later.
I'm not going to call him from here for a question.
Yes, sir.
He can go here to the next meeting.
Good morning, um, I wanted to let you guys know that, uh, currently we're pretty much closing up the November fourth election, I'm getting all the voting history and checking that all with the Secretary of State to make sure everything's correct. Um, also, just as a heads up, we most likely and are, uh, and actually positively will be doing another election in, um, January, most, it'll most likely be in January for, uh, this, the House of Representatives, District Seventeen, uh, with Mr. Tim Kleinschmidt and he has been the General Counsel for the Texas Ad Commission now. So he, his plan is to resign on the fourteenth, um, after he takes office on the thirteenth and so the governor will then call a special election, which we should be called within thirty to forty-five days after that announcement, or after that occurs.
Thirteen to fourteen, the when?
January.
Please.
Um, the, um, also, uh, the biggest project that we're working on right now, besides that election, of course, uh, is, uh, the, um, we want, we're really working on our mapping project, um, you know, since I've gotten here and also since, uh, Mary joined me, we've learned, we've learned that there are numerous, um, issues with our maps and that we may be blowing it out of proportion, but we just want to make sure that's very important that those aren't correct and so Mary is specifically being assigned to doing that as, as quickly as possible. And, um, I just want to kind of let you know that we do invite commissioners, you know, to join us when we're working on your, um, areas, um, with the streets and we're making sure that we've got the right, um, the, the right addresses into the right, you know, commissioners' precincts and things like that. And I know there have been some questions about that, so we want to make sure all of that is correct. Um, and, um, then, and we're also, uh, the, the state, um, we need to make sure that the state plan, I don't believe, uh, from what we've seen actually, the state plan that was submitted, our, that Secretary of State has in, uh, the team system, which is the Texas Public Elections Administration Management System, um, doesn't seem to match exactly that last, um, redistricting that was done, although a lot of the changes have been made. So anyway, we're working on all of that and it'll take us some time, but that is our, one of our primary function, or, um, priorities right now. And, uh, then the last one is also, um, working towards, um, trying to get countywide voting precincts as quickly as possible. And I just want to kind of, um, make a note also regarding that election that's in January, because of the annual, uh, absentee ballot by mail request, um, we cannot accept until after the first of January, so that people will be able to vote by mail if they prefer to. We're going to do a, a mass mailing like right at the very end of December, um, of all of those who have, um, requested those by mail this year based on age, if they were based on age or disability, if they're based on being out of the county, you know, we don't follow those up, someone needs to initiate that. But anyway, I just wanted to let you know that's another thing that we're working on as well.
Report from the Audit's Office, one.
This is a report generated by our financial system, which indicates all cash receipts and cash disbursements as entered. You will go to page three of the printed computer-generated report, you will notice under Room Bridge Special, an additional seven dollars and fifty cents has been added to the outside investments to bring that total to three million, seven hundred and ninety-seven thousand, thirty-three dollars and sixty-nine cents. And the reason for that addition is the check copy for the reinvestment of the interest earned was not presented to our office in a timely manner for allowing posting in the system, it will be reflected in the December business. There is also a page next to the last, which shows our current debt requirements for the county. No payments are due until January on the first debt requirement. The final page is items of interest, as of November thirtieth, cash investments as reflected in the financial system, again, as Vai mentioned earlier, she does not have bank reconciliations done, so I cannot do a confirmation to the bank accounts. But cash in the checking accounts, it's two million, two hundred and six thousand, nine hundred and thirty-two dollars and two cents. Cash invested either at Fall City National Bank or with our three different outside investments, thirty-four million, four hundred and fifty thousand, four hundred and fifty-three dollars and thirty-three cents, for a total of thirty-six million, six hundred and fifty-six thousand, nine hundred and seventy-seven dollars and thirty-five cents. Included in that total is forty-seven thousand, four hundred and sixteen dollars and sixty-two cents of Karnes-Wilson juvenile probation monies. Those monies are not subject to approval by the Commissioners Court. Sales tax received in November, two thousand and fourteen, eight hundred and eighty-nine thousand, seven hundred and fifty-two dollars and sixty-three cents. Sales tax received for the same period in two thousand and thirteen is six hundred and eighty-three thousand, five ninety-nine, fifty-three, which is an increase of two hundred and six thousand, one hundred and fifty-three dollars and ten cents, which is approximately thirty point one six percent increase. We still have not received reimbursement from the requested tax abatement from Energy Transfer for legal fees, five thousand, six hundred and six dollars and twenty-four cents. And we also still have not received the reimburse, reimbursement from the Texas Historical Commission in the amount of ninety-four thousand, five hundred and thirty-nine dollars and fifty-three cents.
One, on this reimbursement for legal fees, Energy Transfer, this has been going on for the last six, eight months or maybe longer than that, who's supposed to take care of that?
Originally, Duncan Phelps. Who were the attorneys for the abatement? Were handling, collecting it and forwarding it to us? Probably six months ago, they asked that we contact Energy Transfer ourselves, which I have done, but we still don't have the reimbursement yet. And that was part of the attempted, when they filed for the requested abatement, that they would pay all attorney fees.
Okay, and then the Historical Commission, ninety-four thousand dollars, you know?
They were waiting on closeout documents from both architects before they will release that. And from what I understand, a month ago, they had received all records, I don't know if they had processed them or not, but they had received everything from Graham balloon and from Lorraine Daley.
Okay. Thank you. Could you check if, uh, what's happened to us? Please do. Thank you, Judge. Thank you, Judge. Status report on county personnel policy, Chevy is that you?
Yes, please, nothing really reported, other than we had discussion on the overtime and comp time thing, I'm not sure where we left that at, we're gonna have to come up with a policy adjusting the county, uh, position on overtime and versus comp time, we have comp time policy, but I don't think we have nothing for overtime this time.
Have we got any from any surrounding?
Have the, uh, not to my knowledge, we were supposed to be working with, uh, uh, all the tax, I'm trying to think of names, uh.
Marian Science.
Marian Science Thompson was supposed to be helping us get that corrected. I've asked, uh, Mr. Kelly to look around at other, uh, counties with EMS facilities and to see what, what their policy states.
And Judge, at the meet, the workshop we had the other day, you asked for the total on the comp time that we have on the books, it's just the number of hours, they don't have a dollar figure for them, but this is the number, we have like five thousand comp, comp hours on the book right now.
I think before a policy can be written, the court needs to decide if it's going to be a monetary compensation or the compensatory time compensation.
We'll put that on a paper, Ken, and make a decision. Any status report, Pete?
Doing, doing our normal maintenance on the, and it's here, Judge, you had asked about the status of the air condition report and as of last Friday, uh, Lorraine Daley officer said that they would email a copy of the contract for you here and Erica, I asked Erica about it, she said she didn't know, she didn't find it, see if it had come in. So that is supposed to be emailed to you here and I was pretty much correct on what I gave you about if they determined it was a shortage, but there's no recommendation yet and supposedly no bill has been made on it yet and Carol said she did not receive a interview and Lorraine Daley said there was no interview included in it, that you were sent out a questionnaire form and that if necessary, they would do interviews, but there was no interview necessary to.
Did you get what they made of it?
I, I did get the survey, but when she was talking about it in court before it was approved, I asked her specifically, would they be talking to each department and she said they would be. I guess she meant by survey.
Well, they have not talked to each department.
No.
Is that everything? Status report on waste and recycling center, James.
No report, everything's just going, same as usual, it's going fine.
Did you ever get that with, uh, remember there was something with TCDQ, they were, what was being called or?
Yes, we're, we're setting up a meeting here at the end of December, me and Asma.
Anything else? Tracy, status report on permit.
On the water lines entrance and road boards, the total taken in for the county was seventy-eight thousand for the month of November.
Okay, we'll go to out of twenty-nine, discuss approved, disapproved, the consideration and possible re, approval of an IGA for six hundred and fifty expansion of Karnes County Residential Center, other, uh, Judge Long. I put my name on it because there was nobody else where else to put their name on it when I put this on the agenda, I have been out to the residential center and, uh, we've heard, uh, several other reports from it and have a request, uh, for the, uh, expansion and approval of the expansion, I believe we have a authorization to do that somewhere in our, Mr. Speaker's work. Well, not particularly, I'd rather have mine. Might as well have yours. We have a draft, uh, amendment to the contract with the EOG concerning this matter, um, we've had a report from the various commissioners that have been out to the facility and have toured it and we've heard all kind of reports from people who guessed it in part and I don't see any particular reason at this point for rehashing everything we've already heard. Uh, Judge, uh, we have Mr. Chapman here, at the quest, at the point of the workshop, I mean, somebody asked us, did anybody else review the contract, Mr. Chapman is here, it would be appropriate with your, with the court, if we could have him, sure. Mr. Chapman, Mr. Hancock, you want to address it?
Yes, I did, at the request of Mr. Hancock, I knew the service agreement amendment that is before you today, I also reviewed briefly this morning all of the other contract documents which have been executed with respect to the facility. Um, the particular questions that I was asked to address by Mr. Hancock was, first, my evaluation of an opinion that was written by a lawyer from Fulbright, Lorsky in San Antonio, with respect to paragraph three point zero four of the service agreement which is before you. That paragraph is the paragraph which obliges the county to cooperate with G.O. in the execution of any contract documents which are presented to it, uh, in the furtherance of the operation of the facility and the, um, continuation of the terms of the original service agreement the county entered into, I believe it was back in ninety-eight. Uh, one of the questions that was, uh, was addressed in that memo was with respect to the county's immunity from suit pursuant to chapter two seventy-one of the Level Government Code, uh, and I'm here specifically to address that for the court, uh, as well as to offer, uh, other statements regarding my analysis of additional contents of the service agreement which is before the court today. Let me begin by. Let me begin by telling you that I agree with the assessment of the Fulbright lawyer with respect to the application of chapter 271 of the local government code as it relates to immunity from suit. The courts in the state of Texas have determined for quite some time now that counties and the local governmental entity have immunity, have sovereign immunity. However, the courts have stated that that sovereign immunity is waived as far as liability when counties enter into contracts with private entities. The county's immunity from liability is separate and distinct from the county's immunity from suit. Counties only waive sovereign immunity from a lawsuit if legislature expressly waives that immunity. And in this case, because we're dealing with a contract for services, the county's immunity from suit has been waived by the legislature pursuant to chapter 271. That is exactly what the Fulbright lawyer said, and that's where he stopped his analysis. What the county needs to know, what the court needs to know as far as your waiver, in order to evaluate the legal ramifications of entering into or not entering into this agreement, is what might happen if you do or you don't sign the agreement. With respect to chapter 271 and the immunity issues that are at play, the statute, the legislature and the court specifically state that the county waives your immunity if the contract you enter into is a contract for services. That does not mean that the contract must be primarily for the provision of services, but it means that there must be an essential term in the contract that services are being provided to the county. In this case, the contracts that you've entered into, as they currently read with this amendment, would provide you the service of housing 30 inmates or providing you 30 beds in the facility. Now, in a facility that is a 2,000-bed potential facility, 30 beds is not the primary purpose of that contract. However, there is case law which supports the fact that immunity would be waived because the county is receiving that service from GEO. What that means is with respect to GEO is that GEO pursues the county if we choose not to sign this amendment and, uh, not go forward with our obligations in section 3.04 of the contract. Not signing the amendment would not in and of itself negate the rest of the contract. The facility would not, the gent would not necessarily close in the contract, the underlying agreement would not necessarily be voided by your failure to sign 3.04. Although I believe that GEO would have the opportunity, if they chose to do so, to argue that your breach was a material breach and it might forgive them from having to continue with the service here with the county. That may have an effect with moving the facility to another county, uh, it may not. That's something that will be determined later on by the actions of the parties. However, with respect to your potential liability, the statute states that the county is only subject to damages or the breach of the contract for the amounts that are due and payable under the contract and any associated delay damages that the vendor or contractor suffers. Now, the language in the statute is clear that originally the statute was drafted with respect to construction contracts. In fact, it was statute bill was particularly focused on contractors who had sued the county for breach of a construction contract. Uh, the legislature will be sponsored by enacted the statute. The statute has been used for contracts that are not construction contracts. And there was a recent case in the Lubbock County dealing with a lease agreement for public property. The court in that case held that the waiver applies to service contracts, but the damages provisions that are in section 271 153 also apply, and one must look at those damage provisions to determine what the county's liability is. In this case, the county does not pay GEO anything. In fact, the county receives money from GEO in return for your efforts and your costs in administering various aspects of the service agreements and the transfer, or the allowance of the transfer of detainees to this detention facility. The only damages that GEO could potentially claim, based on my analysis of the documents that I wrote today and yesterday, is the damages of the additional monies they might receive by the admission of these additional detainees to the facility. I believe that's in the term in the magnitude of 2 million or some other amount of money per month as a flat fee. Now, those damages would be consequential damages. If you did not allow the expansion of the facility, GEO, as a consequence of your denial, would suffer damages because it would lose the ability to collect this additional revenue from ICE for housing these individuals. The county is not liable for those damages. The statute specifically says the counties are exempt from liability for consequential damages and other component categories of damages which are particularly applicable to construction contracts. However, in this case, there are no direct damages relating from the service agreement because there are no dollars that the county owes to GEO in the performance of these agreements. So my analysis from the initial reading and my knowledge of the current case law and statutory structure is that should the county choose not to go forward, yes, you would be breaching an agreement, yes, you would be waiving your immunity, but you would likely be insulated from damages with respect to a lawsuit from GEO because unless there are other damages at this point that I'm not aware of, $2 million they get behind, they're consequential damages, and you're exempted from liability for that. That's the analysis on that end of the document. Now, if the county chooses to go forward with the agreement, there are, there is language in this agreement that addresses potential liability for the county. One of the first comments, I think it was the first comment that was made this morning, was about potential liability for the county for lawsuits involving civil rights, a federal courts, and the current state of the law with respect to what rights detainees have against counties to allow for these detention facilities to be placed and operated in their locality and their jurisdiction. The contract agreement you're being asked to sign has indemnification provision in it, which would potentially and should in that cover any cost the county would incur if a lawsuit were filed by a detainee or by an organization and brought the county into that suit. The indemnification agreement is section 3.05 of this document, and it is, word is quite broadly. Uh, I would suggest that we add a couple more words to this agreement as a modification before it's executed, that is the rule of the court, to allow for the county to recover additional costs that may not be contemplated by the way this agreement currently reads. But it says that GEO agrees to indemnify, defend, and hold harmless the county from any and all claims, causes of actions, suits, prosecutions, administrative actions, or liabilities arising from or related to the operation, occupancy, or use of the facility or the center. In my opinion, any lawsuit that is filed against the county because of the use or operation of the facility is a cost, is a claim, is a cause of action that GEO would have the obligation to indemnify and defend the county against. The importance of the word defend here cannot be understated. The original agreement you had back in 98 only said that the county would, that GEO would indemnify the county, it would indemnifying and hold harmless. That means the county incurs costs. And then once the bill is settled, the county sends an account statement to GEO and says, please indemnify us for this cost. The word defend has been held to mean that GEO has to, upon tender of an obligation of defense, actually pay for the defense of the county in any lawsuit that might be filed as a result of its operation of the facility. Because the county isn't actually doing anything of the facility, other than allowing it to be here, any lawsuits involving its operation, any lawsuits involving the treatment of detainees, any lawsuits that are filed against GEO for civil rights violations, or any other administrative costs that relate to that facility are subject to indemnification by GEO. All the county has to do is send them a notice of a right to be indemnified, and GEO is supposed to perform and pay for that. If GEO does not do that, that is a breach of the agreement by them. Having said that, what I would recommend you do if you're inclined to sign this amendment is have GEO add, uh, language in the indemnification provision which would reimburse the county for all costs, expenses, and fees incurred in addition to just what it says here, because that would give you the right to get reimbursement for any fees, any costs, any expenses incurred as they relate to this contract, as opposed to a lawsuit filed or a alleged breach thereof. For example, my time here today, if you add the cost, if you add costs and fees, that time, that cost for that time could be presented by GEO as an indemnified obligation. And therefore, the county would be fully insulated based on this probation from the expenditure of any funds relating to allowing GEO to operate its facility in your county. That's the extent of my report to the court with respect to the liability, contractual liability issues. If you have any questions, I'm glad to expand on what I've said. I hope you found it somewhat helpful. Thank you.
Thank you. The one question I had was, I've been hearing everyone talking here, and then I heard that one gentleman, I don't remember his name, but he worked for GEO for seven years, I guess he was a former employee. He mentioned something about there not being enough employees to watch over the detainees. Now, can, in the contract, can that be put on that we have to have, they have to have enough employees? What, how do you justify how many employees watch over how many people that are there?
Well, I don't necessarily have an answer to that right now, but I will tell you that in the, in the agreements that you've signed, there are certain terms and provisions that GEO has agreed to follow that have been promulgated by ICE. And that if GEO is not performing as those regulations or requirements would require, the county may have cause to declare GEO to be in default and demand that GEO correct that if the county is to sign this amendment. That would be a factual determination, it would be a further examination of the ancillary obligations in the contract that don't relate solely to liability, to, to, to cost and immunity. But it's certainly something that the county can choose to enforce, I believe, based on what just in my cursor here this morning, the terms that are included in some of the amendments that have been previously signed by, by this county in the past.
How would we enforce that? What kind of enforcement can we do? Who do we send out there to check over to see if it's the proper amount of staff?
Well, like I said, I don't know, I don't have an answer to that question right now, but I do believe from looking at the contract, that there are obligations that are there, and we have to see if the contract has in it any, uh, any right in respect to remedies or notice. And if it doesn't, if the county's interested in building those into the agreement, that can be done.
Okay.
Mr. Chapman, uh, there's been a lot of concerns here that, I guess, we're waiting to see what President Obama does, you know, he's gonna release everybody, or I don't understand how all this is handing out right now, but several citizens are especially concerned that an order could come down and then GEO would pretty much just open the doors and let everybody out. And everybody's scared that the community would inherit a population that we would have to take care of in our schools, in our hospitals, in our cities, and in the county. But, you know, I personally feel that's highly unlikely, but what if?
Well, that, I don't know what's gonna happen with the executive order and the implementation of that order with respect to this particular facility. Uh, I can tell you that the, um, indemnity language does not appear to be broadly enough written that it, that it would cover any consequential costs or ancillary costs that the county might incur as a result of action by the federal government or the cancellation of, of, you know, current immigration policy. Now, I could go back into the contracts and verify whether the county's indemnified or GEO is obliged to pay for any costs relating to the closure of the facility, which in your, you know, question, that is exactly what would happen. I don't know that the contract currently contemplates that happening with respect to releasing any individuals who are currently housed. In fact, when it was originally written, it was, it was a facility, a correction facility, and that would not have happened without the transfer of those inmates to another facility. When it being changed to a detention facility, the amendment changing the character of the facility from detention to, you know, detainee facility for immigration and processing, there weren't any additional terms written into the amendments other than changing the purpose of the facility. And so I don't know that the original agreement ever contemplated the possibility there would be a release of all people housed there. And if that is a legitimate concern of the county before the county chooses to go forward, that's something that would need to be further worked out with GEO as far as location of placement or costs relating to placement if the detention facility closed and everybody was there or released to their other causes.
I think the last meeting that we had with GEO, I think we asked them a question, they said that wouldn't happen. But yeah, of course, we would want it in the contract. But of course, we would want it in the contract.
I'm sure they're gonna say that. But yeah, you would. And if they, even if, if they don't anticipate that happening, then whatever provision you would want to write into the contract regarding their liability for that, the current happening, they could assign the value for the risk associated with that, the appropriate level of weight based on their belief or their evaluation of whether that might ever happen. If they don't think it'll ever happen, they should have no problem putting in a provision which says they pay any costs. So.
Correct. Well, we have a detention facility and a rights facility, a detainee facility. One is tied to the other in the contract. It's that thick, thick book that goes along with the fact.
Yes.
It's hard for me to go through all that and understand everything that's in there, and I'm sure it's kind of difficult for you to say you understand every word that's in there.
I'm not gonna say I understand every word that's in there. I did, I will tell you that I read through the line of the Judge Long is holding the story during this meeting, and, and, uh, I made my way through it as best I could, looking for the particular provisions which address potential costs, services provided, damages and liability. I did not look at it to understand all of the other obligations that GEO might have agreed to perform with respect to, uh, maintenance operations or care of the facility with the people who are currently residing there.
All right, I know you touched on the possibility that the facility would shut down if we didn't sign this agreement, and they moved somewhere that you could place me. I looked at that a little bit. We don't know what's, that's gonna happen, we don't assume it is.
Correct.
All right, if we don't agree to this, we don't agree to expand the facility to what it is today, uh, I assume that they will continue to operate their detention, their criminal facility and their detention, their immigration facility. And what is the possibility of us losing our 30 beds if we don't sign this agreement? Losing our $10,000 if they pay us if we don't sign it?
The possibility of losing the services provided, particularly this amendment, are significant. However, the underlying agreements also provide for the payment of certain monies to the county and the provision of certain number of beds, I believe originally is 15 beds. Uh, if we don't sign this amendment, the remainder of the agreement would arguably remain in full force and effect, and therefore, what the county is currently getting under that agreement should remain constant. What the county expects to receive under this amendment would not materialize.
I, for one, would like to see that, the language, the first part that you said about the, I can't remember the exact word, but the damages.
Yes, the indemnification.
I'd like to see that put into place and also the, somehow address the question that I asked about, you know, just the what if, you know? I think for the citizens of the county, it's something that we should look at. I, I have no, no problem with the facility being there. I have no problem with the facility being expanded. I would just like to make sure that our, our community is, and the county government is, is covered to the best, that we can do it legally and, uh, give us some type of insulation and protection.
So basically something put in there that there will not be a full release of the detainees into this county?
Exactly.
We can certainly talk to GEO and negotiate for initial terms and bring us back to, to the court for your consideration.
That's my opinion, I don't know what the rest of the court feels, but that's my personal opinion.
They need to be in there for them, the detainees to be moved on out, go back where they come from, what else? They don't need to be let out around here.
I suspect that GEO will want to tie whatever provisions we negotiate to current or future federal regulations. So, we may be limited as far as dictating what happens to the individuals who are released from the facility. But what the county's primary concern with and what you can control, I believe, would be potential costs and impact on the community. And I believe that if GEO doesn't believe that that would ever happen, they shouldn't be too resistant to including language like that in the agreement. But we can certainly talk to them about what they say and bring back any proposed language support.
I certainly feel like there's room for negotiations and detailed items in this contract before we approve it.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with the facility, but I would want additional writings in here on our part, things that we would want, if I see them.
Herb, have you looked at this at all?
I've looked at it, Judge, but I asked him to look at it. He is the expert on contracts, and I defer to him as far as his opinion. He knows a lot about contracts. I depend on him to know what to tell us and what to write us.
Herb.
I know it's on the agenda here to approve or disapprove or discuss on what we're doing right now. If we would approve it or disapprove it, say we would approve it right now, could we approve it with the changes that we're asking for and then come back? Or is it just to discuss it around now, come back, rewrite this, and then approve the way we want it rewritten?
It's probably better to table it and reconsider it once the additional language request gets included and evaluated. There's always a possibility that GEO will refuse to further amend the agreement, at which point you don't want to have on record an approval. And so, it's best if you don't want to approve it as is, to table it and re-convince when it's appropriate to do so.
So, basically, it's take no action until this is rewritten?
Correct. We can always take no action and then post on a future agenda.
Herb, do you anticipate how long it might take to renegotiate? Or I don't know whether we need to negotiate.
He just scheduled to be back here tomorrow. I was gonna talk to you about, so I know we probably could get started on it tomorrow. I don't know about GEO and the representatives, if it'd be necessary to negotiate a contract like this. But we've got other things to negotiate, and that is the administrative fee. It's got to be settled, and that has not been settled at this time. The offer on the table is one that Judge Butler accepted. So, that is a fee issue that needs to be negotiated also. And the issues that y'all won't settle and put in the contract, all of those could be addressed in probably one or two meetings with GEO. And we can start tomorrow, Judge, if we can get from GEO at this time. I don't know where that lawyer's gonna come up from to come down here and talk to us about this because these amendments are substantial in a lot of ways.
I see the GEO people here, are y'all agreeable to further negotiation on this contract?
Yes, sir.
But she's not the attorney at all.
Well, I think Rick.
And she's the magistrate or something.
I'm the executive vice president of the county administration.
Okay. But are y'all willing to further to go check this out?
Yes, sir. I would like to ask the court, you have two items on the agenda. One's the IJSA, the state contract administration, and IJSA is the service for the federal government. There are yet terms in there to issue, the avoidable efficiency, the lack of yards. But you know, typical boundaries are, you know, we gotta decide.
I'd like to table both of them until we have a chance to look at them.
Do we have everything you need to look at?
Yes.
And y'all, what is your concern at that time?
Obviously, the federal government is under federal obligations.
Well, they're not working that time. Or is that what I was saying? Whether it be as though they woke something or you woke something.
Well, I mean, we would be that one, if I didn't, as soon as we get inside. Because our obligations, the things we have to say, obviously, it's up to the court, whoever wants to proceed. We have to go ahead and see.
I think the court's interested in pursuing this to some extent, but we need to do it in a way that's careful and also gets done as soon as we can to not hold it up for y'all and accomplish what we're trying to accomplish.
I suggest that we have the seventy-two hours posting of new agenda items on these two items.
Well, we planned to, yeah, we could do that. And I'd plan to have another commissioners' court meeting next week, probably a work session next week, but we could incorporate into it at the same time I'm doing this to take care of this.
We need to know exactly what the commissioners' court wants us to negotiate.
Well, the commissioners' court has to know that first. I'm not sure we didn't, from what I'm hearing. But could you be available to meet with her next week? Or I'm not trying to do anything that...
As far as I am available on either Monday or Tuesday. And I plan on being down here tomorrow to meet with Herb and Red Red. And I can meet on this issue of GEO representatives are available. And if not tomorrow, then I can do it, I think, on Friday.
Can somebody that's responsible for GEO and has authority to talk be available tomorrow?
Yes, sir.
All right. Let's continue this through the lawyers and the folks from GEO. I'm going to set a meeting for next week, I think, on Wednesday if we can, as a work session, as a combination work session with an action item on this matter. I don't wanna hold it up. I want to conclude it in some way, one way or another.
I would ask the court that y'all tell us what items we're in deep of the direction of.
Well, if y'all sit down, if you've got a couple more hours, we'll start working on it, I guess. I don't think we're ready to say that. But I mean, Herb, y'all have heard the discussion, and you've heard the discussion. Do you feel like you know what needs to be done at this point? Or do you need further direction?
I have direction on three items that are a concern for the commissioners' court that I intend to address to GEO.
And then?
That is the administrative fee, the additional indemnity language, and then language relating to costs or other concerns with respect to potential release of detainees if the federal government changes their policy.
Is there any member of the court that wants anything else studied or looked at by the attorney?
Repeat those three that you have.
The administrative fee, that is part of the county. Additional language regarding indemnity. And language relating to costs or exposure of liability for the county with respect to any release of detainees resulting from a change in federal policy.
Okay. What about the staff that I mentioned a little more about?
We can look into that, too.
Okay. I also want that put in there, just to make sure that there's full staff at all times.
I hear one of the court members saying...
We want, whenever they're released...
They want a provision in there that when people are released, they'll be released away from here, out of court.
Yes, thank you.
I have one request. I'd like to see Section 3.04 have an expiration date where we no longer live in care of being sued for breach of contract.
Okay.
Can the GEO people, somebody responsible, be available tomorrow?
Yes, sir.
Would y'all, some of you get with the two attorneys and set up a meeting tomorrow?
Yes, Judge.
Is the court satisfied with that?
Yes.
All right. And I'll schedule a meeting Sunday for next week to get this under way. Anybody from GEO wanna come in or say anything? Y'all all have anxious looks on your face. Just business. I know y'all know that. Okay. Anybody on the court wanna say anything else?
No, thank you very much for attending.
Okay, the next item for action is the German, looks like it may.
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
I'll take it.
All in favor, get up and walk out.
Aight.